Finished with everything that we wanted to go through on work session. So we broke did the city council meeting and now we're here for the second half of the work session. We'll get to hear from police chief Jim Coleman. Is there anything else you wanted to add Robbie?
Uh, no, if we can just pull the PowerPoint back up and then Chief Coleman will take it from there.
Did that? Okay. There you go. Okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone, mayor. Members of the council, thank you for affording me this opportunity to update you on the police response in the presence of very aggressive ICE enforcement in our community. Uh, I want to say that I spent the last several hours with my staff, listening to every speaker that spoke tonight. We, we were touched by many of them, uh, not in disagreement with anybody in particular. Those are just personal experiences of what people are going through out there. It very much helps ground us in what our responsibilities are to the community. We are committed to protecting and serving, uh, the visitors, the, the workers, the people who live in the community of Hillsborough. We do that by following Oregon state law and the guardrails that it sets up. Uh, as we try and protect and serve, we do that because we uh, run quickly into trouble if any kind of personal belief or matter of expediency causes us to reconsider uh, whether, whether or not to follow the law. We know that making an exception under any circumstances is just beginning to stepping on a slippery slope of what would ultimately be many unintended consequences of that. So, uh, it's, it's difficult to hear, uh, that folks feel like we could be doing more. I hope to help people understand what we are doing with those constraints in place. And, uh, if I can start by just going back a few months when we did a, the police department work session. We did talk, um, uh, for a period of time about immigration enforcement. And we talked about how the police department realizing with the change of administrations and the signaling from the current administration that immigration enforcement would be, uh, one of their main focuses that, uh, we were going to retrain our folks who had uh, spent, uh, four years without it being something that we encountered very often. Uh, and then many people being hired in that interim who have never dealt with uh, what Oregon state law has to say and, um, direct in regard to immigration enforcement. We have, we have been ready to more specifically address how uh, we would interact with, uh, both immigration and persons that are being targeted by it. And the time is came about a month or so where we, we saw the patterns. We saw what we're experiencing in our community and we want to get a little bit more specific with our officers as to how we would uh, deal with that as we came in contact with it. One thing that I want to make clear is we do not ever refuse to go to a call where immigration enforcement might be taking place. We're not, um, of a mindset that that's not our business. We're going to stay away from it. We respond, uh, to all calls or incidents or circumstances in the city that are indicative of possibly being a crime or circumstances that threaten public safety or public peace. Our core duties have not deviated from responding, assessing, formulating a plan and taking uh, action if necessary and legal. We also document as appropriate in these circumstances. That could take the form of written reports. It can take the form of entry into our computer aided dispatch system. They can take the form of recording events through our body worn camera system. Uh, specifically in relation to immigration enforcement and this uh, evolving of and being more specific, specific about what we will do in Hillsborough. Uh, because of what we see happening are, uh, first of all, we understand and expect our officers to, um, know what the first amendment means and, uh, to understand the lawful expression of it. We use reasonable methods to verify suspect suspected apprehensions are not actually an abduction, a missing person or a criminal matter that needs further investigation. We take reasonable steps to investigate suspicious vehicles and circumstances. We use reasonable methods and availability of time and to secure or return personal property in the wake of an apprehension. We make notifications to affected family members if that's practical. We assist community stakeholders such as schools, businesses, public officials, if they're impacted by an apprehension. When possible, we de-escalate uh, volatile encounters or situations where federal authorities and community members have become involved in something other than an apprehension. As far as the de-escalation goes, which that is an example of if a local or state law enforcement officer is in the, um, process of de-escalating something and they give a lawful order which is not followed, we are prepared to make arrests. Uh, this is to protect more and more third parties that are becoming more and more endangered. I will, uh, talk about that towards the end. Body worn camera footage is, um, always encouraged to be activated. The policy doesn't always, we don't, when we respond to an immigration matter, the policy doesn't always dictate. Um, the circumstances around that, we don't have a specific policy that says record immigration matters. It's about how we interact with the community, what we think might be going on that prompts us to record. But most officers are in the habit of recording these because they know, um, it's important for the community to know what's going on there. These recommendations are not intended to be all inclusive. They're consistent with how we normally police the city. Um, I want to talk about a couple of, uh, just make a couple of clarifications, uh, from topics that came up tonight in the, uh, in the meeting and from folks that were speaking. Uh, the Hillsborough Police Department does not and has not ever used Flock cameras, the Flock camera system. Uh, we were approached by the vendor to use this as part of a grant. Uh, part of this grant is, uh, primarily focused towards, uh, addressing organized retail theft rings. And Flock offered us, uh, this technology. We refused it. Um, and I'm not here to disparage any company. That's probably not something that the city attorney would want me to do. It, it wasn't about their reputation. We just as a police department and following the city's lead, do not passively collect information about the citizens of Hillsborough. We do have two automated license plate readers that, um, are very visible. They're not secretive. We deploy them on operations such as organized retail theft. Past courses with other police agencies, uh, overseen by the district attorney's office. And we sometime, we have used them and they have been successful, um, in more uh, situations that I don't care to delve into, but helping us solve, uh, serious crimes such as homicides. Uh, many times they're used with a warrant in place.
Could I get a quick question on that chief? Sorry, but before I forget this, on the license plate readers, do you share that information with Fusion Center, the Titan Fusion Center, any other federal agency? Are you only using it for your own internal purposes or prosecutions?
Yeah, we share with other local and state law enforcement entities, uh, but, uh, we do not, it is not shared currently with the federal, with federal agencies.
Do you know whether any of your partners that you share this with would turn around and share it with the Fusion Center or Titan Center or any federal?
That I don't know councillor, but we can certainly look into that.
Thank you.
Councillor Sinclair.
Thanks very much for what, uh, President Harris was just asking. Thank you, Mayor. Do you know of any of our governmental agreements with Washington County where Flock is used and where that would inadvertently?
Um, I, I would have to look into that too. It's a very good question. Sometimes, um, uh, you know, I, I pay attention to my agency. I don't know every piece of equipment or every, um, vendor that the county works with, but it's a good, it's a good, um, unintentional back door that we should check.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Uh, one, uh,
You're good.
Yeah, alright. One other thing, uh, that, you know, i- is a matter of perception, so I don't want to say that it's not true. But we absolutely understand that, um, as we're trying to navigate Oregon state law and not interfere and not assist, which is at sometimes a very small, um, needle to thread, that it does appear as though Hillsborough police officers are disengaged, not, uh, doing uh, the work of public safety. Uh, I, I have, um, been briefed on and I've seen many incidences where officers have responded. They are not disengaged. Uh, many of them are recording what's going on. They're, uh, deciphering what's going on. Uh, many times we get there, we don't know if it is, uh, you know, a warrant or if it's, uh, an arrest based on probable cause, or if it's even immigration enforcement. Because we are more and more running into situations where it is an, uh, an immigration, uh, observer. And, um, and that, uh, tends to devolve into some sort of confrontation that actually isn't immigration enforcement. It's, it turns into, uh, whether or not somebody has violated federal law and whether or not those agents are going to take action on that. So, um, we're recording, we're, we're trying to de-escalate without, um, as the city attorney said, without physically getting in the middle, um, if, if, uh, parties are engaged. And, uh, I would not expect one of my, you know, certainly to save somebody's life. We might move in front of a moving vehicle. But when, um, we have situations where people are standing in front of cars and, and blocking them, I, you know, we, we want our officers to protect their own personal safety as well and, and to not be in those situations. But we, we are definitely not disengaged, uninterested. We are trying to navigate the law. Um, as, as we have been in, uh, both, uh, trained and are gaining more and more experience all the time. Um, the most recent, I want to just share some numbers with you over the most recent month, October. In October, uh, there were 26 incidents that generated a police report and or a dispatch incident number. This does not include any call for service that did not include the word ICE. So we generate tens of thousands of incident numbers and reports, um, over a year. Uh, so when we go back to look at those, we have to use keywords to search those. And this, in ga- in getting this information, we use the keyword ICE.
Um, so chief, you're saying there were 26 calls for service involving ICE?
26 where we either wrote a report or an incident number was generated through the dispatch center. And, uh, typically we will add notes to those incident numbers. So it's a, it's something that slots in between writing a full police report and then not writing a report at all. If that makes sense.
Yes.
Okay, uh, the log that we add notes to has everything from the, the person that called to where the address is, time of day, what the, uh, initial reported facts or observations were. So it's, it's more than just a few words. It's a, it's a very, um, detailed layout of what we were headed to. And our officers will typically, uh, talk about what they, um, observed when they got there, any actions they took and, and how it was resolved. So, uh, a little bit short of a police report under those circumstances.
I have a quick question.
Councillor, okay.
Are you? I didn't think about this, but, um, if ICE was to perceive that one of your officers was helping, they could be arrested. Alright, by ICE, if they were perceived as helping.
Helping a?
Helping, yeah, helping somebody who doesn't want to get detained. If police are perceived as that, then they can be arrested. But the perception of whatever their actions are, can they be similar to what residents have been experiencing and doing, such as you mentioned getting in front of a car?
Uh, I hope I can, I hope I can answer the question appropriately. Um, nobody can interfere with a federal law enforcement agent while they're lawfully engaged in their duty, including police officers.
And have officers been asked by ICE to help them out?
They have.
And what, how have our cops responded?
Uh, I do not know of every situation, the situations that I'm aware of, they have told them, uh, we cannot do that.
I appreciate you, um, sharing that. Um, you have met with all of us over the past couple of days and you and I met today. So, um, so I appreciated hearing that. Um, so I just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you councillor. Um, I just quickly add that, yeah, the, um, the officers are, um, and this is not a plea for sympathy. Um, it's just, this is the fact, the officers frequently find themselves, um, under harsh criticism from both sides. That's what neutrality sometimes looks like. Okay, um, as, as I, uh, kind of mentioned, this, this number does not involve many, many calls we get from community members asking about what to do if they see ICE activity, uh, about, uh, HPD's involvement and other informational inquiries. We try and, um, message a lot through the community. Um, I've been in, um, with many of you at community events. Uh, I've been with the, uh, mayor at several community events. We just continue to try and get that message out there. We know it's hard to penetrate through a lot of the other information that's floating out there. And in some ways we are contributing to the information overload. But, um, we try and solve a lot of, we will, you know, have brief conversations sometimes with folks about, um, information that we feel is important, but, uh, really the bulk of that goes to the dispatch center and, and that place is really, uh, geared towards working towards emergencies. And they really don't have the, the personnel and the time to answer a lot of those questions. So really our main way of answering those types of informational questions is to continue to, uh, push it out through our website. Independent interactions with our officers out in the field, those are probably innumerable. I, I couldn't even begin to tell you how many of those things probably happen on a daily basis where we're telling, trying to explain to people what the law says and people who feel many different ways about, uh, immigration enforcement. Um, uh, yeah, federal agents, uh, the, the 26 incidents range from federal agents temporarily detaining a vehicle and its occupants in a coffee business drive-through to vehicles left abandoned in roadways after an apprehension, to missing person calls that are later confirmed as ICE detentions, to reports from community members who believe they were being followed by ICE. Uh, importantly, there have been no verified incidents of persons posing as ICE agents in Hillsborough. And, uh, there have been no verified incidents of federal agents claiming to be Hillsborough police officers to date. Uh, Hillsborough police officers have begun multiple investigations to determine that persons were not the victims of a criminal act under Oregon state law, meaning they were apprehended by immigration enforcement when their family members or coworkers or, or just, uh, citizens that witnessed an ICE apprehension have, um, have assumed that that's what it was. We, we still move forward, uh, investigating it as a possible crime until we can verify, um, that it was actually an immigration apprehension. That can sometimes take several hours. Uh, we have numbers, uh, that sometimes work. Uh, we, we just have a, a number of ways to try and figure out who people are, but that none of them are direct informational, um, exchanges with ICE. We provide them nothing. Uh, it's, it's kind of, uh, working a case to figure out what exact, exactly happened there. Uh, we've helped families, employers, local schools and other officials verify whether a community member is in ICE custody. Uh, we've requested non-emergency medical responses for persons after encounters with ICE agents. Uh, we've removed abandoned and damaged vehicles from roadways and sought to return them to their, uh, responsible parties and avoid impoundment fees. Uh, returned personal property to family members who have, um, ended up in ICE custody. In one case, um, we sheltered an abandoned pet at Bonnie Hayes after its owner was taken into custody and the animal was left in a local Lowe's parking lot in the vehicle. We, uh, so in just kind of, uh, wrapping up, because I want to leave plenty of time uh, for questions, uh, not all of HPD's responses have been in the wake of a detention or apprehension. The department has also responded to smaller number of incidents that involved attempts to impede federal agents or intervene on behalf of others while agents are trying to apprehend them. More and more, those attempts are endangering third parties who are not either trying to intervene or federal agents. They, um, and that takes the form of, um, very aggressive, um, attempts to follow ICE officers, to block them, uh, to force them to drive off the roadway and over lawns and through shrubs. And, and some of this is happening in an apartment building complexes. And it's, um, it's causing me and, uh, the rest of the police department a great deal of anxiety knowing that, um, hopefully it's not just a matter of time that somehow we can de-escalate and prevent somebody innocent from being seriously hurt or killed. Um, they're just, um, certainly, we, we understand and we will not interfere with people expressing lawful first amendment their, uh, rights. But we have people that are going far beyond what the first amendment rights, um, allow them to do. We appeal to them again, um, to consider that, uh, when they do that, they face both, uh, personal and legal jeopardy. And they are putting their fate at times in the hands of another person and that person's judgment, uh, when they do these things. We think it's dangerous. It's not because we're trying to protect ICE agents. It's because we're trying to avoid a tragedy. Um, one last thing, uh, the business end of things, uh, we, um, we do not, we have not put out special patrols for ICE. We really don't have the resources for that. It's probably not a good idea just from a, um, strategic standpoint. What we, when we respond to, um, an ICE incident, those are patrol officers responding to those incidences. So, you know, there isn't a direct cost as far as, um, paying for extra patrol, so to speak. But there are absolutely indirect costs. Um, not, uh, the least of which is the extra work I and the executive staff are doing uh, in addressing counsel and, and other questions. Most importantly, um, these are usually multiple officer calls. Yeah, they're a kidnapping, an abduction, a possible crime in progress is a late, is a officer intensive response. And, um, even getting a vehicle out of the travel lane on the road requires a minimum of three officers, um, just to protect each other from being run over. So, um, every time we go, uh, that is multiple officers who can't go to other calls for service, who can't serve the rest of the community. That is not the community's fault. That is a result of the enforcement tactics. And I believe that's, um, what I wanted to cover in the update and then leave plenty of time for follow-up questions.
Any questions for the chief? Councillor, okay.
Um, I, I don't know if I have a question for you, but as much as I do want to share some things, um, I've been on council since 2017 and before that I never had any relationship with HPD. And I, uh, my life experience, um, taught me not to trust police. And since I've been on council, I've had an opportunity to learn what HPD does. I've gone on ride-alongs, um, met with you, appreciate the fact that you will go and, um, meet with people and sit down and listen to them, talk to you about things that are happening. And that's businesses, and I've done that with you. That's businesses. You've been kind enough to go out to be in a star and talk with the staff and the management about what's happening on the properties and what ICE has done to them. Um, but I, I, I'm, I can't sit here and say that, um, that all cops are good. I'm going to say that cops are humans and they work in trauma-based jobs. And that, that is, to me, is in no way easy. I've had cops talk to me about what they experienced and that being a cop is the only job they could get coming out of the army or military because they've had that experience. Um, and I shared with you, I shared with you this today and I'm, I'm bringing this up because there are going to be people in the city who don't feel comfortable, who don't trust and all they see is uniforms. And then, um, you have the difficult job of trying to bridge that gap and trying to help people understand. And one thing I appreciated hearing from you today was the fact that ICE is also demanding you to do things. And that when you and your cops don't do what they want, it really makes them angry. And that you're, uh, you're not living up to the work that they do. In my opinion, I do not believe that they've had the level of training that you have had and all of HPD to provide public safety in a manner that is safe and fair. Um, my unexperience recently at Winco with a police officer, I want to say this, um, that I saw a bank of cars, ICE cars, some of them took off. Motorcycle cop rode up. I said, hey, hey, there's ICE vehicles right there. And, you know, and people were standing around and he said, what do you want me to do about it? And I said, excuse me, you, what did you say? And I said, you work for a sanctuary city, so you should have some sens- sensitivity to the fact that ICE vehicles have been parked here and there are people shopping inside the store that might be freaking out. And as you say, might be acting in a way that's not going to be, uh, the usual, right? Um, we heard tonight from a lot of people who have been, um, have feelings about their experience with HPD. And we have new council, we have new staff. Sanctuary City was in 2017 and people weren't here for what happened in that time and why we got Sanctuary City and how we came to that vote. But, um, we need to really work hard with our community to bridge that gap if we are going to continue telling them not to respond. That's going to be really hard. There's a lot of heartbreaking stories that we heard here today. It's going to be hard to bridge that gap. Somehow you're going to have to do it. And I think that there needs to be retraining about what it means to work for a sanctuary city. Thanks.
Yeah, councillor, thank you. Uh, we did have a conversation. I always appreciate your candor with me. Uh, I, I think I, I just want to say, um, in the most, um, you know, time appropriate way, uh, when I, when I say that we direct our officers to, um, help people get back in contact with their property, um, help them with their pets to, to let their, their coworkers, their family know that they're not the victim of a crime. I, I know some people feel it's a crime. I'm just talking very, um, legally. Um, I didn't come up with those things. Those are what the officers were doing already. They were actually inspirational to my direction to the police officer. So I'm very proud of, uh, the police officers at Hillsborough Police Department. Wouldn't trade them for any others in the world. And, uh, thanks for your feedback.
Then not all bad. You're not all bad. Yeah, a lot of you have done a really, a lot of good. Um, so, you know, one egg doesn't spoil a dozen.
Are there any other questions for Chief Coleman? Councillor Sinclair.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief Coleman, I really appreciate that you're here, putting yourself out here and advocating for the police department and also making yourself available to our questions. Um, tonight when we heard testimony from residents, I kept hearing, like, I'm tired of hearing what you can't do. Can you share with us what we can do? Um, because when I look at it like Oregon state? Because when I look at like Oregon state statutes, there's been rumors of extortion calls pertaining to ICE, things like that. Can you reassure us as a community, like, that is part of state statute? Like, we will respond to an extortion call? I just want to hear what we can do in association that's not directly with ICE, but still has echo effects of impact due to ICE.
Yeah, thank you, counselor. And I certainly won't be able to provide an exhaustive list. There's more, you know, thoughtful people than me that work at the police department and in the city that help us with these things. But yet, we, luckily, we have not seen the circumstance where we saw a federal agent acting in a way that we could articulate was with criminal intent. And, but if we, and that is, as the city attorney explained earlier, the bar is incredibly high. It's, it's probably higher than most people realize to be able to say that's criminal. But, you know, if we saw somebody, you know, at the other end of a use of force, for instance, that looked as if that person's life was in peril, I think we'd be hard-pressed not to at least, you know, say, hey, do you see what's going on here? I, you know, you need to, we, we can say and suggest a lot of things without actually making physical contact, without breaking Oregon state law. We have not come close to that yet. I know a lot of the things are very traumatic, but there is a very high bar there. We, I had a high idea in my head and it disappeared as I was speaking, but yeah, we, I'm sure it will come back to me. There are, yeah, if I can, yeah, I'm, I will raise my hand again if, if some of those ideas.
No, and I'm sure we'll have other opportunities in the future as things evolve. This is new for all of us. This is unprecedented. I do look forward to additional recessions in the future and to see how we all learn and grow from each other and hope for more educational opportunities for HPD with our community to continue to educate us on steps we can take.
Thank you. Counselor Enbree or Counselor Sagato? Okay, great.
So, so you mentioned special patrols for ICE, which, which, which are not there. Is that something that would be helpful in your opinion?
No, I, I think for a number of reasons, that's not, you know, that, I think we could be unintentionally encouraging people to, like, have a community kind of situation here where we're trying to figure out where ICE is and what they're doing. And we really don't have the resources that we could afford to pull people away from responding to injury traffic accidents, domestic violence calls, crimes in progress, things like that. We just, it's, if we, if we created a special patrol for that, for instance, we would have to run short and other very important areas of our ability to respond to 911 calls and crime preventions.
So it's a resource constraint, but the actual thing might be helpful?
I, I, I didn't mean to suggest that that was something that we, we had considered. I just, I just want to make it clear to people that we respond out of our patrol resources and therefore it, it makes it different. We have to leave other calls holding. If that's helpful.
Yep. And then the other one, how, how are, how are you coordinating or working with the other police departments?
Yeah, we share ideas, we share experiences. Part of, you know, not every, all the advice and direction we give our officers is from experiences in Hillsborough alone. You know, we watch both locally and nationally. It's, it's one of my primary concerns is that you have a federal agency that's, boy. Thank you, Simone, for giving me water. I needed it. We have a federal agency that is probably incorporating experiences from across the country and how they give their agents direction, rules of engagement, if you will. So I'm very mindful that they may be responding in a way here in Hillsborough that was precipitated by events somewhere else. So we have to be cognizant of that. And, and so we look across the country locally. We have boards and meetings in place where I, I meet with every other chief and the district attorney and the sheriff. It's usually monthly, but it's quite often more frequently. In times like this, we meet next Thursday. This will be a big topic there. I also meet regionally and nationally with other law enforcement leaders. And we, we also, you know, frankly, try and have relationships with our federal partners. There are very important things that we do with, for instance, with the FBI that help citizens of Hillsborough. They solve violent crime and things like that where we certainly don't engage with the FBI when they're asked to help with immigration enforcement. But in areas where those relationships are important when, when times like this happen, so we can maybe speak reason to each other, help each other explain what direction we're coming from.
I have two questions, but first I just want to say, you know, after watching the video that you shared yesterday and just seeing how, you know, you mentioned earlier where you're playing a neutral part. You're getting chewed out by the ICE agents and then you're getting called out by the public. I just have a lot more empathy for the role that you're playing and that your officers are playing, because it's not a, it's not a good situation for anybody to be in, right? And I know what, considering what the community's dealing with, it's, it's not as rough as what the general public's dealing with, but just in your role, it's rough. And then also for your Latino officers, right? Because, you know, being multicultural and bicultural also, each side wants to put us in a bucket, right? We're expected to be perfect on one end, and on the other end, we're expected to do more because of our last name. And so that also creates some internal conflict. So I really hope that you have that support in place for those officers, because that's, that's even an extra issue that they have to deal with, right? They're out there, you know, I saw how the, the people going to the store were interacting with them. They were smiling when they were approaching them, right? But then they're also getting called out for being a police officer or being Latino. And so it's just, there's a lot going on there. So I really hope that, you know, we have the, the support in place for those officers, because it is not a, it's not a safe situation mentally for them to be in. So I just commend them and commend the work that you all are doing. My questions are, can you confirm that if somebody's pulled over by somebody wearing a mask and an unidentified uniform and they call 911, that you are able to respond and confirm the identity of the officers? Can you just confirm that that is a call that you would respond to?
Yeah, we, we would respond to any 911 call. But when we talk about confirming the identity, you know, that means like, if they're still there, they don't have to wait for us. You can't, you, it's not advisable to, to.
So it hasn't happened to this point?
Yeah, but, when we do respond, I mean, we, we can't demand a warrant. We can't demand their identification. If they make reasonably obvious to us that they are federal immigration enforcement, then we're right back in that zone of neutrality. Yeah, so we will respond to any call.
Yeah, yeah. So let me just share scenarios and let me know what the likelihood is. So, you know, we heard that from a lot of people today that they're scared just to be out in public, right? And we hear it through multiple channels, not just, and we've been hearing it for months. And so let's say, you know, one of, there's a Latina woman in a car and she's getting pulled over. And she's like, well, I don't, I can't see any badge or identifier and calls 911. And, you know, you get there in time. In that situation, how do you engage? Are you saying that you can't confirm that they're agents or not, or how would that play out if that was a likely scenario?
It's, it's probably understandably way easier for us to determine if somebody's law enforcement or not. We, we know what the look for. We, so we would probably, we have not struggled to identify ICE officers if they're out on foot. It is enormously difficult to know if a vehicle is actually an ICE vehicle or not. There, there are a lot of people driving cars with blacked-out windows that are not ICE agents. We don't know that all ICE agents drive cars with blacked-out windows. We just don't know. A lot of, some of them are rentals. They don't all have emergency equipment. They don't have special license plates. Vehicles are difficult. On foot, we can usually very quickly, and we have been able to very quickly identify that they are federal, federal agents. They're not all ICE agents. I think most people know that, but that they're federal law enforcement.
Federal law enforcement. Yeah, yeah. I just want the public to hear that that is something that we will support the community and if there's concerns that, you know, they're not federal law enforcement. So thank you for doing that.
You know what? You just reminded me what I wanted to tell Counselor Sinclair. And it, and it dovetails with that. We will vigorously pursue and strenuously encourage prosecution of anybody that tries to take advantage of the trauma that our community is going through now by posing as a law enforcement officer or official to extort or to cause fear or anything. If you impersonate a federal law enforcement officer to do those things, we will be after you.
Counselor Case and then Counselor Enbree.
Counselor Sagato, I asked a good part of my first question about, you know, what can we expect? I mean, can we, can we ask for, if you're, if there's an incident involving ICE, can you ask for badge and identification information that we can keep on hand? Is that, I mean, I know you, you can recognize who they are. Is that a possibility? And I know we talked earlier today, and so a lot of questions you and I talked about earlier today that I, so, yeah.
We can ask. We can ask, but if we, if there's any reasonable belief that they are in fact law enforcement, we can't stop them from doing what they're doing. We can, we can absolutely ask, but we can't cause the, we can't impede or interfere with them if they refuse to do it. As, unless we can articulate that we are, we have a reasonable fear that they are not federal law enforcement.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And then another quick question, which may be more for the guys on the left here. But if we did a, like, a state of emergency was declared, would there be, I mean, would HPD be working against ICE? Would they, would we maintain, I mean, would that state of emergency kind of? I mean, there's a bunch of different things in that, yeah.
I'll take a crack and then I'll turn it over to Chad. Declaring a state of emergency based on the things we're talking about wouldn't have any effect. Doesn't mean the council can't do it. Just to be clear, if the council wants to do that, we certainly can. I just want to be very transparent with the community and with the council. It doesn't change anything that we're doing, the funding that we're talking about doing. We can do that already. I don't believe it would change anything, the way that police is already protecting the community. So, so it's, it's more semantics and it wouldn't really change anything that we're talking about doing.
Yeah, Chad and Robbie are the guys to ask, but I, I, hey, I'm not, I'm not a legislator or a councilperson or anything like that. I don't, you know, just knowing that if it doesn't comport with Oregon state law, it's not going to, we're not going to, you can't imbue us with any power that, that is contrary to that.
Counselor Enbree and then Counselor Sinclair.
Thank you. So, kind of going, 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 continuing with that. So why, why, so you said, so what, what is stopping the police from demanding IDs?
Demanding is the key word there.
I didn't know you used demand and you used both.
We can request. It depends on what you mean by demand. I mean, demand, in my mind, I'm sorry, just means that like, show it to me or else, which is not a position we are in.
Right. And why is that? What, is that important?
Because we're subject to the same laws as everybody else when it comes to a federal law enforcement agent. We can't impede or interfere with their lawful.
But maybe you're.
It's the supremacy act?
But we, but we don't know if they are federal or not.
Yeah, that's, we, we have to do both. I mean, we, we're, if, yeah. They, they often do where, I am not defending the way they dress in any way. But we, our officers typically can identify a badge quickly. And whether it's embroidered on top of a load-bearing vest or, or it's on their belt or something. I mean, those are the things our officers are looking for as they're pulling up, as they're getting out of their cars. You know, they are doing that. They're, they're, they're typically not going to ask for credentials when they're engaged with somebody, because they're, you know, it's, it's dangerous. We don't know who they're talking to. It could be a very dangerous person. So we're not going to say, hell, hold it, everybody stop, show us your credentials. The officers are just navigating these situations. And if they can, if like, there's an opportunity to say, hey, you know, what, what agency are you with? What's your name? They can certainly ask that. There's nothing stopping us from doing it, but we have no way to compel federal agents.
Okay. And that, that is because of, no, that's not because of Oregon law. That's just because of federal law.
It's because the federal, and Chad can probably speak to it, but it's very broad. It's very broad. Yes.
Yeah. So I, I think the, the more direct answer to your question, counselor, is that under federal law, as the chief was saying, any person is prohibited from impeding or interfering with a federal agent doing official duties. In order to actually demand and interfere and say, you can't move forward unless you provide me with evidence of who you are, the officers are going to have to be able to articulate a reason why they don't believe that this is a federal agent. So there's going to have to be a valid basis to say, we don't believe you're a federal agent. So, you know, we think this is a possible kidnapping. We're going to investigate this kidnapping and we're going to stop you from moving forward to be able to demonstrate that we weren't actually interfering with them. If, if there's evidence that those are federal agents and all those things the chief was just describing about those, you know, the badges or other sorts of things that the officers are trained to recognize. And then we can't articulate that we had a reasonable belief that they weren't federal agents. And that's going to put the officers in jeopardy of violating that federal law. And so that's the sort of fine line that they're walking to say, hey, can I articulate a valid reason why I don't believe that these people are federal agents? In which case, then I can maybe take more strict action here. Or if I can't, then I have to sort of back off a little bit, because then I would violate federal law. Is that a good summary, chief?
Yeah, it's super helpful, Chad. I think, I think there's, we're kind of maybe in unintentionally talking about two different directions here. Chad's talking about if we have reason to believe that they may not be federal officers. But if it's, I, I think sometimes people are also asking us, we want you to ask their credentials so we know which federal officers were doing what. That's where it's completely voluntary on their part and we can't articulate, like, well, you know, we were, we were told by, you know, forgive me for saying, our city council, that we need to get your name. They don't have to comply with that.
Because of the supremacy clause.
Yeah, it's, it's correct, if I may.
I, I just have one quick question associated with that, and it's, it's with that, and I'm so sorry. Okay, so, but is visible identification required on city-controlled public premises?
Well, yeah, I mean, they would have to, they would either have to have permission or a warrant to enter city control. Be in public places, no, but a city premises, yeah, that had, that meets all the standards of not being open to the public. Again, we're getting in attorney speak here, but yeah, they, you know, I, it's always when we talk about public spaces and public premises that are city-owned. It's a little bit dicey because they, they are two different things.
But Chad, if we had made, if we made, if we codified, I'm asking, and I'm not trying to do a Gacha, because I feel like a really bad counselor. We just went through so many hours of testimony from our public who are scared and rightfully so. And if there is like some sliver of something that pushes the dial. And if there is like some sliver of something that pushes the dial to be actionable. I think it's worth it, but I mean, I'm just generally talking right now. What I'm asking is. If we codify jurisdiction on city-owned. Uh, controlled premises, does that at least, it doesn't protect people from ICE? But does it require ICE to be accountable for identifying themselves?
So, I, I wanna sort of try to explain a little bit what chief was saying, just so that we're all talking about the same thing. We're all on the same page. So when we talk about city-owned premises or city-controlled premises, that's a lot of different areas. Those are areas that are generally open to the public, you know, our parks, parking lots, where anyone can go at any point in time. And we're not restricting people necessarily from being there, anyone from the general public. Versus areas such as Robbie's office or, you know, other areas of the city where the public isn't generally allowed to go. And so under state law already, um, and under federal law. If a ICE agent or any other federal agent wants to go into an area for immigration purposes that is not generally open to the public, so like Robbie's office. They would either have to get consent from the city, which state law already prohibits us from providing. We're not allowed to provide consent for them to go into that area. Or they would have to have a warrant um, to, to be able to go in there and show us the actual warrant to be able to go in. So in that situation, we would be able to verify that they are federal agents because they would have a judicial warrant with them to be able to go into those areas. So that's, that's one bucket of city-owned property. And so in that situation, it's already, state law already sort of provides that. There's nothing that precludes us from doing something, you know, to mirror state law and saying the same sort of thing. Like, if you want to go into these areas, you know, we won't provide consent and you have to have a warrant. But just so the public and everyone on council is aware, that's already the state of the law right now. And, and one of the, you know, one of the commenters was exactly right. You know, I told you at the very beginning of my presentation, I was just giving a ten thousand foot. Overview of, of these issues. Um, but the, the state laws, the state sanctuary laws do provide for a lot of different things than what I talked about earlier. And this is one of those things about that consent. So then the other bucket is the area of city-owned premises that are open to the public generally. And in those situations, um, we can't have, we don't have the authority to tell ICE that they're not allowed to go there. That um, they're allowed to be there, just like any other member of the public, and we can't necessarily preclude them from being there. However, under state laws, we've talked about, we're not allowed to use city resources for immigration enforcement purposes. So we can certainly put up signs and do other sorts of things like they're doing in Chicago to sort of say, you know, ICE, you're not allowed to be. Doing these kinds of things. I, the, the concern, and this is more of a policy issue, is whether that somehow presents some sort of falsehood of safety for people. Because ICE doesn't need to necessarily follow that or listen to that. And I don't know that we could actually enforce that against an ICE agent. Who ignored our, our signs or whatever our ordinance that says you can't be on this, this uh, park that's open to the public generally. To arrest somebody. Cause I think they're gonna say federal law preempts that. We have the ability under federal law to go there. We don't need a warrant to go there. So therefore your ordinance is invalid.
This is such a complex thing.
Yeah.
Because.
I tried to make it as simple as possible.
If some, if ICE was saying, we did do that, codified it and had our signs up and everything. And then let's say they did come to our parks, how would our police officers respond to that? Do you see what I'm saying? I mean, it is very.
They can be there in the parks.
Right, but what if they were arresting people on our parks and it's. It's one of those sensitive areas, you know what I'm saying, to where it would be in your natural, you know. Reaction to want to protect our community. And what would that be? And none of us have the answer. And it's complex.
Cool. And I, and I think the answer is, is that the federal government take the position that that is, that that ordinance would be preemptive. So therefore it cannot apply to the ICE agents. So we're creating that sort of sense, that, that falsehood of protection. For people in the community thinking that is a safe area when it's really not. And so that's where I think, you know, obviously it's a policy call for you all. Um, but it's one of those things that you really need to think about. Um, and look, you know, I, I think what you all did tonight. And getting public comment and, you know, what staff is proposing to do and, and you all proposing to do is to continue to work with the community and hear from those people who are actually affected. About whether or not that type of thing would be helpful. You know, I'm not one here, sort of the ivory tower to say, no, that's a really bad idea. That's not my call to make. And I think that, you know, getting that feedback from the community like Counselor Allcare was talking about earlier today, makes a lot of sense for you guys to continue to have that conversation. But when you're having that conversation, I think those are the kinds of things that you want to be thinking about.
Uh, Counselor Allcare.
So um, I think we're gonna, because um, I had somebody ask me today. Uh, November seventh, that all this was gonna stop. And I said, no. It won't stop until we have a different president. So I think that we need to have, as this gets more um, ramped up. We're gonna need to have more frequent updates from you. And probably uh, recommending having a work session focused just on ICE and HPD soon. And we're gonna need to hear from Jim soon as detainments get more frequent. Um, and possibly people getting hurt or impacted negatively. As our businesses continue declining, I think we need to hear more from HPD about what's going on.
Thank you, Counselor Allcare. I'll just add, and I, there are two slides left. Um, and part of it is to address what you had said. So if it's okay with the council, um, I can finish these. It won't take me very long. Uh, but it's, it's pertinent, I think, to part of this discussion. So if we go to the next one, Simone. Um, we talked, we're, we're, we're focused a lot on police. And I just want to add, first of all, my appreciation um, for our police. They are put in such a difficult spot and we have incredible officers that I, um, I, I appreciate what they do. We also have a lot of other staff that are also being affected by this, right? And so uh, as an example, while we haven't actually seen ICE, specific ICE activity in a city facility, it's been very close to some of our libraries, for example. We've had librarians that have witnessed it, right? So we are working really hard to make sure that our, all of our staff, every single staff member has access to all the training that we're, that we've been talking about. We're, we're doing, and we're updating it as, as soon as we can, right? We're updating our guidelines for interactions. We have it for supervisors as managers. For what they do in case, and we have it for our frontline supervisor, frontline staff as well, so that they at least have some type of preparation in case something does happen. At a city facility. And, and in those, we talk about the public versus non-publics um, space. Uh, we, we are actually working on updating all of our signage that show employees only pass this point, right? Most of our facilities have that, but we want to be really explicit about that because anything beyond it, um, unless there's a warrant, right? Then nobody from the public, including, you know, uh, ICE agents or someone else, would not be able to go if they didn't have a warrant. Um, we talk about the importance of not interfering, right? Because again, we cannot create liability for our uh, public employees when they're in those situations. And we want to make sure that they are also safe. But we also ask them to report these things, you know, so we want to make sure that we are aware whenever these things happen. Um, we're just up, uh, we're, we have a, a frequently asked questions, uh, um, list that's gonna be going out to our staff probably tomorrow or sometime this week. And we'll be continuing to add that as well. We have our EAP program, our employee assistance program. Because not only is it stressful for people on the job, but we have employees who have family and friends also that have been affected by this. So we want to make sure we are supporting our employees as they are going through this. And then obviously, we have a very high focus on making sure that we're presenting all of our training in both Spanish and English. We have many employees who's. Uh, who prefer uh, Spanish as their first language. So we're doing our best to make sure we're communicating um, the best we can. Um, Simone, if you could skip to the next one, this is where we were normally gonna put the Latino Policy Council to serve my.